I'm going to ask the Apostle Brown to give us our prayer, followed by Councilman Crum to give us our pledge of allegiance. Would you all stand please? But y'all bow your heads with me, please. Most gracious, loving, eternal Father, we just want to thank you for blessing us all to arrive here safe and sound. We want to thank you, Father, and give you praise for watching over this entire city of Creighton County during the storms and the tornadoes. You have blessed this place to keep us all safe. We do pray for all of those that were impacted by the storm, Father, that you would bless them and make provision and provide peace. Father, we ask for your strategy and your wisdom here today as we gather. What I pray for the mayor and all the those on the Board of Council here today, that you would just give us your wisdom, help us to move this city forward, Father, to impact this community in a very loving and positive way. Pray for all our first responders, Lord, the police department and the firemen's and, Lord, all the nurses and the doctors and all those that are here to give themselves sacrificially. We pray that you bless them and meet every need according to the richness of your glory in Christ Jesus. Bless this nation, Father. We pray for our president and his administration, that everything will be done in accordance to your will for the good of all the people. Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy, and we love you and we need you. In Jesus' holy and precious name, we pray that all God's people say amen and amen.
Let us remain standing and face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is founded, one nation under God and the principle where they redeem just as far.
Thank you and be seated.
I'm going to call this meeting. I'm going to ask our city clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suta Junior.
Here.
Counselor Bruce.
Here.
Counselor Katz.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Mary.
Here.
Counselor Willis.
We have nine out of ten that's present. Before we go to bid openings, I think it's important and very fitting, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Willie Bruce, who spent decades educating the children of our city, as well as the Honorable Judge Powell Rainey, who spent two and a, well, two and a half decades on our bench as our municipal judge. So will you give him a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We're going to move down to bid openings. Mr. Johnson is here. If you all have any questions or anything, or can I get a motion and second to refer back?
Second.
On the paper, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those bids are approved. Were there any other corrections to the minutes outside of Councilman Kat?
Motion approved, Mr. Min.
Second.
On the paper, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? His approval. We're going to move down to old business. City Attorney, third reading?
This is the third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 1305 Thompson Avenue permitting a light vehicle repair mechanic shop in a downtown mixed-use-two-zone DTMU-2.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, could I get a motion and second to approve?
Make a motion, get it on the floor.
I got a motion, though. I get a second.
Second.
I got a motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. As I discussed in pre-council, it appears, it appears that Ward Two has a lot of issues with junk cars and things like that. Not only junk cars, but washing machines and dryers. And I don't know why we can't seem to get this straight, because I've been back on the council for four years. And as you drive down Broadway, 14th, 15th, 16th, nothing has changed. So I don't know what the issue is, but I cannot support it. I only have one vote. But I'll say again, Ward Two is not, well, the city of West Memphis is not the city of junk cars. And basically, that's what we have. And so I feel like until we can get handled, well, we need to get handled, I can't support it.
Mayor. Mayor, if I may, may I ask that Mr. Bowman come up? I know enforcement can be tough sometimes, but can you kind of give us an idea of the path you've been traveling down and maybe what we can do to help with that, to make this more efficient?
Okay. Good, good evening, members of council. One of the issues, of course, that we have in the city is that most people, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, regardless of the type of business or property, are not aware of our ordinances. The ordinance states that a car repair shop should only have five cars waiting to be repaired. None of, just about none of the car repair shops in the city have been following this rule for many years. Under this new mayor or administration, it's not really new now in our second term, but code enforcement has taken on a new, new face, so to speak. We're getting more aggressive about code enforcement, so we have to do a lot of education regarding what the ordinance state and how they should be followed. So one of the things that we're doing now, we're doing this process called the Clean Corridors. I'm going after all of the major offenders that are car dealerships and car lots and so forth that are on our major streets like Missouri and Broadway, Avalon, and just streets that we travel frequently and a lot of people see. So I'm sending them letters, making them aware of what the ordinance says in terms of the number of cars that they should have waiting for repair. A lot of these businesses, and I do agree with Councilperson Bruce, is that they have wrecked or junk cars sitting outside of their shops and they can't be repaired. So one of the things that I'm stating in the letter that I sent to them is that they must have these cars removed or returned back to their own. If they don't, they'll be towed. So I'm recently going after some major offenders on these major thoroughfares. Some of the newer businesses that are coming in, and I agree with you, need to be made aware of what the ordinance states in terms of them only having five cars out there. And they should be cars that are not irreparable or junk. So we're having this conversation. We're also working with the car dealerships and the used car sales lots and the car repair shops about not screening their property properly. So when you drive past, you can see behind their building all the junk cars or wrecked cars or trash and debris. So we're working with them on that too, but we're going to get really aggressive with finding them, making sure they're aware, giving them a ticket, having them come to court, paying penalties, and doing those different things to make sure they get in the order. Now, the two businesses that aren't on the agenda here, one of them was closed and is coming back as a light, light car repair. Light repair is a bit different than heavy repair. They're not working on engines, pulling out parts out of the car, that sort of thing. Heavy repair is a bit different. They typically use a lift. They have to have an oil separator not to pollute the ground and so forth. And sometimes, most of the times, the heavy repair seems to be the more offensive, but we're going to get all of them in order. So I agree with you, we have a lot of work to do in terms of enforcing the ordinance, but we also have a lot of education to do too.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, sorry, Mr. Bowman, may I ask, do you need other resources to do this? Because the reason I'm asking is we do not have a lot or very many code enforcement officers.
Actually, we're working on that too. I'm working with our human resource office, particularly for a seasonal, part-time code enforcement person and another part-time code enforcement person, to see if we can make any progress with just those two individuals. If we feel we need to make another full-time person and then keep a part-time person or a seasonal person, we'll look at that. But I will say we're understaffed. We only have one code enforcement officer. And sometimes I use our staff from our office to report code issues as well. And then, of course, we got the app, which I want everybody to push, so the citizens can learn how to use the app, whereas they can type in trash or debris or high grass or what have you, and then it'll prompt them to leave their name, it'll give a location of the offense, it'll send it to my email and to our code clerk, and then we can give it to one of our code enforcement persons.
That, that was that, that text, that number?
Yes.
So that you could, yeah, I've got that posted on my Facebook. But I think that, getting back to Counselor Bruce's question, I think that if we had more code enforcement officers, that we probably would see a lot more getting done. And, and that's the only thing I wanted to say.
Let me add this about that. The one that said that we can only hire two, it takes the council to up, to up that allotment of code enforcement. You all do that, then I can't do it. But we also using the police right now, as well as the code enforcement that we have now.
The only, the only code enforcement officer I see is one. We only have one.
You have, you have, you have two right now.
Yeah, we actually have two. We have one that deals with environmental code enforcement, and then we have another code enforcement person, officer, that deals with junk cars and towing of cars and that sort of thing. But we do need some reinforcements in terms of the environmental code enforcement as well. So they do, but they both do kind of separate jobs.
Right.
I think my question is, since we're dealing with these two ordinances, have they complied with what you're talking about? Because, you know, we have a decision to vote on or for or against. Are they in compliance with what you're talking about? Have they cleaned their particular property up and adhering to the rules and regulations of the city?
Well, well, the first person on the first ordinance, the light vehicle repair, that person has never been in business as a car repair or light repair shop in the city. The second person has been in business at South Woods for some time, and he has complied. We haven't had any issues. Now, there's a property neighboring to him that we need to address, but it isn't his. So he has complied.
You know.
I've got a question. We've had several, actually, public works meetings, and we've not had a code enforcement officer in the last three or four. To me, that should be one of their requirements to come to this public, the Public Works Committee. That's what they're for.
Okay, that's it.
Well, what I'd like to say is, I mean, you stated that, and it may be true for some that don't know, but these business owners know, they know, especially the ones that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And so, nothing has been done. It looks, it's terrible. So my thing is, until we can show where we're going to actually hold these people accountable, I can't support that. I just can't. I'm sorry. Because it has not been done. Again, Ward Two is terrible, and that's the ward that I represent. And it's, it's just no reason that some of these businesses have all these things around their, their business.
And I agree.
It's like they don't care about the city. Now, I guarantee you, they wouldn't have all that stuff around their house, their own property. So why you gonna, so we got to have somebody that's going out to make this happen. I mean, I understand, I know you've been, having had all the staff that you need, but in four years, I know something has been handled. Just being honest. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but we got to do better.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Bowman, I know the city attorney should be back, maybe in a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
Oh, with mayor's approval, would like to have a meeting with him, your office, the entire council administration, where we can all sit down and let's, okay, here's where we're getting some bumps in the road, here's what we've accomplished, here's the next five steps we're going to take to resolve this situation on a permanent basis. I didn't know if maybe the first week in April, if we could sit down and meet, maybe after the council meeting, since it's at one, we just roll straight into it, if the city attorney may be available at that time to actually attend in person.
It should be.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right. What are we going to do? Going to table it?
Yeah, I'm going to just table it until we can. There's a motion and a second on the floor. You'll have to vote it down and then do a motion.
What was the original, what was the original motion?
Well, the original motion and second was just to put it on the table for discussion. And since we're still at that point, both of these businesses are in compliance, is my understanding. Do I want to prevent a business from growing and prospering? No. But I think it's urgent that we handle the concerns that Ward Two has in other parts of this city. And we need to meet as soon as possible to develop a plan that's going to handle this once and for all. And make sure that we do what we need to, whether it be ask for assistance from the police department or give the city attorney. And this person now has the authority to go write citations. Where we get four or five different people, there may be two of them part-time, but we need to get more help to that department. Now, and we may be able to pass something that gives them authority to do that. There may be somebody out of the superintendent from Public Works may say, I've got three hours a day. I'll be glad to handle that. Don't know. But if we sit down and work as a unit, as a team, we can resolve the issue.
Dr. Bruce, how you feel about it? Are you still wanting to table it?
Yes, I'll redtable it until we can discuss it and then bring it back. Because we have to have something in place. Because what we're doing is not working.
You can make a motion, boss. You can make a motion, table.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
On the paper, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? His table. City Attorney, the next old business.
Third, third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 301 South Wood Street permitting a heavy vehicle repair mechanic shop in a light industrial core I-1C.
Hearing that read for the third and the final time, could I get a motion and second?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Ask that we table this until the second meeting in April to give the council and administration time to meet before the final decision is made. Second.
On the paper, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, I mean, not passed, I'm sorry, his table until two weeks from now?
Four. Second meeting in April.
Second, second meeting in April. All right, the next thing is how I stay of the city.
Twenty minutes are now.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to stand before you today and deliver the annual State of the City address. As many of you know, this address is an opportunity to reflect on our progress, celebrate our many accomplishments, and look ahead to the future that we are building together. I'm pleased to announce to you all on today that the state of the city is strong and continue to gain strength and financially stronger than we have ever been. I want to start by expressing my gratitude to our dedicated department heads who work hard for our city and our city employees, to this amazing city council that I have worked alongside, to our churches and community leaders and civic organizations, even our teachers and the schools administrations, to our local businesses, and most importantly, the residents of West Memphis. Your hard work, passion, commitment is what's keeping our city on a winning streak. 2024 was a very busy year for our city, and together we got a lot started and a lot done. Just to touch on a few high points, in January, we launched our Tech My Gov app. This amazing tool is a two-way interactive alert system. Tech My Gov is not only a useful emergency alert system, but our citizens can also let our departments know about potholes or missed trash picked up, for instance. The system can also let our citizens know about upcoming community events. And I want to thank Director Rose for this app. Thank you. Additionally, we broke ground on the Curlin and Nessie Chris Animal Shelter. This partnership with Southland Casino will provide optimum care to our fur reference that are in our city's care. And deservedly well, Ms. Carrie Ficello and her style, they deserve a great place that they can call home. Also in January, Director Russell Jones, our Parks and Recreation Administration building, by repurposing the old city library, the quality of life investments for critical to support the growing mission and responsibility of our parks and recreation department. With most planned events, with monthly planned events, the dream team has ensured greatness in our city with our recreational success. Thank you. In February, we hired a new general manager for our West Memphis utility. Bob Atkins hit the ground running, and he has proven to be a fierce advocate for ratepayers for our city and a good steward over the utility funds. Thank you, Bob. In May, we kicked off yet another summer program with over eighty students in our school under the leadership of Mr. Reese Bow. This program provides hands-on experience and exposure to those amazing youth, as well as income to those youth and their families. Also in May, we launched the Mayor's Take Action Tour. Now, I was going to skip on this tour, so, but we took it. We visited neighborhood schools throughout the city to listen to those thoughts, ideals, and sometimes even complaints from our residents. Our city departments follow up on every concern that our citizens share, and we are a better city because of those interactions. In June, we held the ribbon cutting for our city's first-ever inclusive park, an inclusive park designed for our children with autism, Down Syndrome, physical and mental disabilities. This project was started only six months earlier, was the brainchild of one of our many youth during our summer program, and was funded by this council and our governor Sarah Sanders. Thank you, Director Whiteside, who wrote the grant, for your work in securing the outside funds to help make this dream a reality for some of the most amazing youth. In July, was a huge month for the tri-state region. I joined Memphis Mayor Paul Young, Tennessee Governor Bill Lee, highway officials from RDOT and TDOT, along with the Federal Highway Administrator, Director Bat, to announce the proposed design and identify the funding for the mechanism to replace the I-55 bridge. In August, another key quality of life initiative for our city was accomplished. We cut the ribbon on the renewed High Tower Park and our new amphitheater centrally located in the heart of our city. Thank you once again, Director Jones and the dream team. September was also a great month for up, upgrading the image of our city. Several of our city buildings were modernized with a fresh coat of paint, new signage, and updated landscape to give our fresh, give a fresh look to this very building that we are in right now, City Hall and Public Works Building. There's many more to come. Also, the leadership and support of this great council, you all invested 1.2 of 2.1 million dollars to do all street overlays to much-needed repairs to the city streets here in the city. In October, we introduced a new home buyers workshop. At this event, spearheaded by Director Bowman and our planning department, we brought HUD reps, lenders, builders, and realtors together for prospective home buyers with the goal of helping families realize the American dream. Since elected, I have promised our residents that no neighborhood would be left to hand, left behind. I'm sorry. To that end, we went in the most crime-infested and dilapidated areas, commonly referred to as drunk town, and cleaned it up. We cut down trees, removed brush, we installed quality fencing, as well as we bought some of the land, we demoed old trailers. And as a result, today, we have twelve new homes that have been built and sold, breathing life into what was a forgotten neighborhood in our city. Additionally, presented to our citizens the first Fall Faith Festival, where we brought together police, fire, and the faith community for an amazing night of fun, faith, and fellowship. In order for us to improve our city, it's going to take a united West Memphis on one front. And as a man of faith, I totally believe that we got to have God in the head of it. That's what makes our city go. Also in October, brought on a flurry of economic development activity with the announcements of Buc-E's, Starbucks, Babalene Instant Oil Chain, as well as numerous small businesses that started up. Also, Dollar Tree Distribution understood this city is moving in the right direction. They want to be, once again, a part of the positive energy, and as well, the result, they have made a $400 million investment, reinvestment, back into our community with 600 new jobs. They are true, and they are truly an example of when you get knocked down, you get back up and you bounce back. Coca-Cola consolidation made a $50 million expansion. It's a testament to the strength of this city and this administration. They could have gone anywhere that they wished, but they chose to win the city, West Memphis. Some are completed and some, some of these projects are completed, and some of these projects are under development at the moment. But I assure you that each of them will be welcome additions to the city of West Memphis business community. November was a historic month for our city, and that citizens voted overwhelmingly in favor of a 3/4 cent sales tax to enhance quality of life, improve flooding control, and aquatic center, recreational center, and to strengthen our public service facilities. I want to once again thank the city council for allowing these citizens to vote on this quality of life and public safety initiative, and thank the citizens for their confidence in my administration. The process has already begun to deliver on everything that we promised to the citizens. Additional in November, we launched the AWIN program, which is a seamless digital communication system that ties our county, city, state, and federal law enforcement partners together. This move, this means that we move faster response, how fast response, and a greater safety for everyone within our region. And we are pleased to bring this peace of mind to our citizens. Once again, thank you, Director Rose. Jim Jackson and his team have broken ground on our city center renovations. This $3 million project will cultivate with a renamed building honoring our first female mayor, Mayor George Ferguson Civic Center to West Memphis. Finally, in December, we announced groundbreaking on the much-needed renovation of the Children Rogers Park. Thank God. Thank God. They ain't gonna be the first thank God now. Upon the completion of this upgrade, we'll turn this complex into the type of amenities that we draw regional participants that we will all be proud of. We capped off a year with an annual tour giveaway in partnership with Bosch, food giveaway in partnership with Southland Casino, and an annual shop with a cop for our kids at State Line Learning Center, all to bring cheer to some of our deserving children and families. I want to thank my police department, Chief Campbell, and I see Chief Presley here. I see Chief Campbell. Thank you all for that. Finance Director Tori Perry. Girl, I love you. Implemented a new finance system for better accuracy for the council can know what is being spent and what's not being spent. So it's not just something the mayor is saying. Now, I got a whole choir. I think I got a whole choir. I'm messing with Councilman Crum. But I have a whole choir that stands with us and say, we know what's being spent. And when I say we are financially strong and we are financially sound, they can testify that that is accurate. I'm pleased to report that because of the diligence of Tori Perry, Kenneth Johnson, and Bob Atkins and her team, we are finished with back-to-back use of zero material findings in our state audit. And we were named, not that far, an A-plus credit rating for the city of West Memphis. We finished this year with the West Memphis Honor Ceremony. We are show, we showed love and honor some of West Memphis' finest and amazing individuals, businesses, and nonprofits. It's a bridge in West Memphis. There's more famous than the Golden State, the Golden Gate Bridge. And it's called, ladies and gentlemen, y'all ready for it?
Yes.
On three, let's say it together. One, two, three. The Ridge Road Bridge. I'm happy to say that thanks to our city engineer, Mr. Will Wimbush, his hard work, once the city had went through a lot of bureaucratic things, you know, it was first under the responsibility of the state, then some things changed at that point. I mean, Walmart, that's the only way you can go going on that bridge to Walmart. It took Walmart 100,000 years to even sign over to do some things. Then at that point, we had to move a gas line. We don't own gas. They come from Summit. So there's so many different things that came along with that. So the city was able to take this, take a little bit more of the fee. But guess what? We getting this done, and hopefully this will be completed by April of this year. Members of the council and citizens, by all accounts, last year was a very busy and productive, and in some ways, a historic year. But those who know me know that I never rest on past successes or saying what someone else didn't do. As public servants, we are elected to look into the future and focus on our opportunities, challenges, and horizons to conquer on behalf of the city's families and future generations. That's why I'm excited to announce these major projects that are in the pipeline for 2025. Project Groot, which is the proposed data center that we're all, that you all had approved, which has the potential to bring up to 300 additional jobs to our city and would be in at least $3 billion investment. So I'm not gonna, $3 billion would it be dollar investment? So you know, we never been used to saying we done a billion dollars in a year. Now I'm getting, I gotta get used to saying we doing over a billion dollars. I'm pleased to announce that we are very close to flipping the switch and being able to offer broadband connectivity to our citizens. Yeah, yeah. With this, we will be able to offer the faster, high-speed Wi-Fi at a fraction of the cost. At the West Memphis Utilities, we have also ramped up tree cutting to assure that we are taking every measure to keep the lights on during unfortunate storms and natural disasters. Finally, the West Memphis Utilities has brought on board state-of-the-art technologies to include new apps that would allow our customers to, in real-time, 24-hour interaction with the West Memphis Utility Department and also paying bills. When you need help and you call, we are now ensuring that someone will answer. This year, we are on target to replace our aging sewer system by completing our $45 million wastewater capital investment plan. This investment will double our sewer treatment capacity, ensuring that every resident, come on, will flush and do not back up during the time of heavy rainstorms. I believe that this, I believe that every council member will share with me an excitement once again when I say this. Ridge Road Bridge is almost complete once again. The long overdue project has run into lots of bureaucratic red tape and hurdles, and we're all, we're all pleased to get it underway for the residents and the businesses of our neighborhood. In closing, as we look, we have accomplished so much as a city. However, work is far from being over. This year, we will bring new challenges, but with the challenges to come comes opportunity. We will continue investing in our neighborhoods, investing in our infrastructure, growing our economy, improving public safety, and strengthening our community service for a brighter future in the city of West Memphis. I'm proud of the progress that we have made together, and I'm excited about to roll ahead. The state of the city is strong, and with our continued support, we will continue to make it stronger. I thank West Memphis, and I'm honored to serve as mayor of this city that I love. Let's keep building a brighter future together. And last, I was surfing around on the West Memphis Neighbor App. And I read one post where a lady said that our city looks like a ghetto. I didn't take offense. I just believe her frustration was a cry out for help. As you have heard my State of the City address, and you are, and we are exceeding economically, financially, and responsibly, that our city is doing great. The problem that we see, like what Dr. Bruce talked about today, can the city do more? Can the council give us more help? But if the people that lives here, when you all decide to say that this city means more to you and you respect it, and you're gonna treat it like you want to treat it in your own home, then we wouldn't have the problems that we have. When those say that it's crime going on, it's not, you know, these men and women who committed crime, or these men and women that's on this council committed crime. If you make better decisions, then the use of policing would have to be needed. When some of our citizens, when some of our city is not clean, come be a part of the solution. I have an idea for you. Join Councilwoman Muhammad and her efforts in keeping West Memphis beautiful. Or start your own cleanup. Pour your garbage back in. It's bad that I have to send Colin Ford to make you pour your garbage can back to your house, and it's your garbage can. Don't throw your trash from your car on the street, because if you in a car, you on your way to somebody got a house that a garbage can is in. It's not the city that trashes the city. It's some individual who doesn't respect our city as much as we do. The trash don't belongs on the street. There are two senior ladies, one white and one black lady, who gets up most mornings, walking down the streets, picking up trash. They do it because instead of pointing fingers at us, they believe in keeping our city clean because they know that's the solution. If you want to eliminate crime, be a part of the solution. Since 2019 to 2024, violent crime, regardless of what you may hear or what you may see, has been reduced by 52% over the last five years. And I have to credit Chief Campbell and your staff for making this happen. I'm crying out to our parents to know where your kids are at. Raise them, take responsibility. We all play a part keeping our community safe. We must take responsibility and address any and all issues. Let's stop talking about it, and let's start being about it, West Memphis, because we are one community, and I stand here to say, West Memphis, we are united. Thank you.
Twenty-two minutes. I'm impressed.
You know it was. Testing. You know it was 22 minutes, but you know, as much as we do, it's gonna get longer and longer because we making things happen around here. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, Ms. Muhammad, will you give me the honor of R1 and O1 and O2?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. I would like to make a motion that R1, O1, and O2 be read by title only.
Second. All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, city attorney?
R1 is a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the city of West Memphis corporate limits.
Also, can I make a motion to amend one of the address owners? Councilman Cat and Director Bowman has made that change.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we got the amendment done. All right. Hearing that, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Will you give that R1 the number?
Resolution number 2318, 2318.
That number is 2318. O1?
O1 is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and mosquito control efforts, and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the first, first time, did you want to make them?
Yeah, make a motion that we spend the rules and places on the second reading.
So moved.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and mosquito control efforts, and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, that we spend the rules and places on the third and final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion and second. Congrats. All right, city attorney. All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
This third reading of an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and mosquito control efforts, and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, can I get a motion and second to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there in the discussion?
Mayor, I'd just add that they've been with city for years. Their prices were locked in for probably ten before they moved it, and it's the same price as last year. It's a great company.
Any other? Hearing none, all in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Ordinance number 2696, 2696.
2696. O2?
O2 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging a 0.75% sales and use tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Hearing that read for the first time, can I get a motion and a second to suspend the rules and places on the second reading?
By title only.
By title only.
Second.
Second. All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
The second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging a 0.75% sales and use tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Hearing that read for the second time, can I get a motion and a second to suspend the rules based on the third read by title only?
So moved.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging a 0.75% sales and use tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Hearing that read for the third and final, third and final time, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have more taken. Do you want to call the row?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Mary?
We're up nine out of 10. So it passes. Also, can I get a motion and second to approve Emergency Clause 45, paragraph 45?
So moved.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
If I may, just.
Emergency clause by roll call as well, please.
All right. We got, we got a motion and second to approve the paragraph 45. City clerk, will you call the row on that?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Mary?
Nine out of 10 that we had, all nine, is approved.
If I may, go ahead and ask questions.
Sure, sure.
If, if I may, we had a brief conversation before council. The assured guarantee, and if you want to come to Mike, that'd be great. There's a clause in their, their declaration here that says they may or may not grant the renewal by May 9th. And I just wanted you to just address that real quick.
Yes. Hi, council, uh, council members. My name is Sarah Giamo. I'm an attorney at Friday Eldridge and Clark. I'm your bond counsel, and I spoke with Councilmember Cat earlier today. The bonds were sold yesterday, and we anticipate closing on April 30th, so there won't be any need to, to renew. There's also the commitment, the, the bond ordinance that's before you that you just approved authorizes the mayor design documents in connection with the bond issue, and that includes the insurance commitment, and those are on his, before him right now. So he will sign the commitment. So there won't be any need to renew that agreement.
They're insuring 50% of the total principal interest at any given time, correct?
So they're insuring, there's an insurance policy, and there's a debt service reserve insurance policy. So the insurance policy covers the total principal amount of the bonds. Yes.
Okay, I was reading it 50% of the bonds.
Yeah, so that's, so that's the debt service reserve insurance policy. So reserve is kind of like, typically, if you, if you cash funded a reserve, it's like a rainy day fund that sits there, and normally, or oftentimes, we would do that as half of the maximum annual principal, or principal and interest payments, the maximum debt service. And so this policy, it's like a substitute. Instead of cash funding it, the debt service reserve insurance policy covers a half year's worth of payments. Does that make sense?
Can you just touch on those administrative fees that we have right here at the very front end after we sign everything tonight? You know, their premium and a couple of things.
Yes, sir. So at closing, what's going to happen is you'll, the trustee will see, will receive what we call the purchase price of the bond. So it's the principal amount, and then you've got, there's some premium, which means your investors paid more to buy the city's bonds. The premium, and then the underwriters discount. So we plus the premium, less the underwriters discount, and that will go. So we plus the premium, less the underwriters discount, and that will go to the trustee. And I'm happy to walk through those amounts if you'd like. But that will go to the trustee, then the trustee will pay the insurer for the insurance premium and the bond, the debt service reserve insurance premium. Then the trustee will pay cost of issuance. So there's a trustee's fee, a bond counsel fee, and then there's some administrative costs, and there's also the cost of publication. So the bond ordinance will be posted in five locations tomorrow, and then we'll also submit it to the newspaper to be published next week. And so the proceeds of the bond can be used to cover the cost of publication of the bond ordinance.
If I'm right, that was what, hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars total for everything?
Yes, that's correct. So the, for, the premium, so the total principal amount of the bonds is forty-seven million, fifty thousand dollars. The premium is just over a million, and then the underwriters discount is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand. And then the other costs that will come out at closing total approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Does that make sense? The rest?
One fifty-five?
One fifty-five.
One fifty.
Yes, ma'am. Everything else goes into the construction funds for each of the projects. So there's the parks projects, the police improvements, fire improvements, and drainage improvements. So everything else will be divvied up based on the amounts that were approved by the voters in November.
And I hate to keep asking too many questions, but?
No, that's okay.
Stevens will handle the annual reporting. Ms. Perry will make sure you have data and then you put it into the system?
Yes, so actually, the Friday firm handles the annual reports related to each of the city's bond issues. So what will happen is, if you want to know the nuts and bolts of it, so I will get the sales tax collections that cover each year, and I will compile the report, and then I'll, I submit it to Tori, and then she gets the mayor's signature, and then we get it filed on Emma. And that's a public website where the city is required to provide this annual information to bondholders.
Thank you, Mayor.
We had no permission request, but I'm gonna ask that we keep Councilman Weles? Okay, give me that ordinance number for that.
Ordinance number twenty-six ninety-seven, twenty-six ninety-seven.
Okay, we had no permission request. Like I said, I'm gonna ask once again that we keep Councilman Weles in our prayers. Committee reports, airport?
The airport met this morning, and Ms. Cook with Garver Engineers stated that the second phase of the North Apron Rehab Project would be set to begin on April the seventh. There was much discussion due to the fact that the tenants and hangars, one, T six, T seven, T eight, T nine, will not be able to access their hangars during this time. Ms. Cook is going to look into the cost of trying to gain a temporary access for the north side of the hangars. And then the other discussion was Commissioner Rosado stated that he flew in over the north approach into the runway, and it appears that there are no critical impeding obstacles at that time. He also flew over the landfill and found the same results. And then we had a little bit of discussion about the protocol of the meeting. I do want to ask that in your package, we have a vacancy on the Airport Commission Board. And in your packet is a resume. And this is a resume that was, he, this person was a candidate when we had two vacancies, and we had three resumes. And in the minutes, you will see that Councilor Cat had said that, you know, you bring the resume, let you look it over, and then we would vote on it, I guess, at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Well, since nobody else brought another resume in, technically, we'd be voting on it in two weeks, but since nobody brought one in, I have no problem with approving Mr. Morris for the vacancy, just me personally.
Okay, so we could do this, make this action today, so?
Well, actually, the council will have to vote, so?
I know, that's what I was gonna say. I don't know, let's see. We make a motion?
You'll have to make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Motion in second. All the paper by?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added.
All right, now we make a motion to approve this individual to fill the vacancy of the Airport Commission.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Mr. Clark, will you call the roll?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson? Councilor Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilor Monday? Councilor Mary?
Yes.
He's approved. Did you want to vote? Oh, they approve, or they? For the airport committee nominee? Yeah, yeah. It passes, it passes. All right.
Mayor, if I may, I've asked for consideration to go into recess so we can finish all the bond documents so they can get back to the Little Rock, and then we can reconvene and handle the rest of the meeting.
Okay. I get a second?
Second.
All the paper by?
Aye.
Opposed? I really go to a quick recess, you know, taking about two minutes. I'm just about to. Don't ask for a motion in second, and definitely we took the break to sign airport documents for our referendum, so?
Motion, we come back in session.
We have a motion in second. All the paper by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We did the airport, I know we did the airport, did we do the far?
We did the airport and we approved that, Mr. Morris.
Yeah. The far?
I have fire and Public Works.
Okay.
I do Public Works first. Public Works, we met on three, four, twenty twenty-five, and we changed our bidding, our meeting time to the first Tuesday at two P M. Our report, our fleet report, front end loaders, three operational, none down. Our rear end loaders, two operational, none down. One on Bandits, three operational, none down. Grapple truck, three operational, one down. Our recycle totals, one hundred and forty-seven thousand and forty pounds. We only had five hundred tires this month. We had to purchase thirty-four carts. Three were stolen, four we had purchased by citizens. And we had some that the tops were busted, so we had to replace the tops to them. We also request that a city engineer and also a code enforcement officer be present at our meeting. Last but not least, our landfill. When they came before us back in the fall, there were some improvements that were supposed to have been made. So I also want to refer that to our city attorneys so we can get those improvements done because they are costing, they are wearing and tearing on our equipment in the Public Works. Then we had five fires. We met on March the eighteenth at twelve noon, and we, no, at two P M, I'm sorry. We changed our meeting date to the third Tuesday at two P M. Okay. New hires, resignations, promotions, and vacancies. We have two vacancies on the fire side and two vacancies on the EMS side. Retirement date for Dairy Bell will be April first. Personal protection equipment, we had about twenty-four new apparatus. We had twelve from last year and twelve for this year. Our building maintenance, we have finished our schematics for our, for Station One to be constructed. We have three firefighters in training as of now. EMS calls this year to date, nine hundred and thirty-two. Collections, year to date, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred, sixty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Our updates were, our tough books, they were installed in all trucks. And my understanding that each firefighter has it also on their phones. Okay, and there were other updates, but the main thing that I want to bring to our attention that our fire department is doing a great job, and that they were, oh, before I do that, Chief Ely is asking for twenty-four new positions, twenty-four new firefighters. And the reason for that is we have a lot of new equipment.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay, change, okay, thirteen new firefighter.
Twelve, that's what I thought he said.
Thank you, Chief. Thank, yeah, yeah. And the reason for that is, you know, we have a lot of new equipment, and you know, primarily before this year, you know, we are, we're mostly single families. But we have multi-level buildings going up, and we have some already up. So if our city is moving forward in progress, and we need to add to our fire department so they can do the job that they need to do to keep us safe. Okay, and last but not least, I think our fire chief and our fire department has done a great job. And I want to thank Chief Ely because the municipal league has recognized your efforts, and you have been named the Trans City of the Year. Thank you, Chief Ely.
End of report. Okay, DRC. So you, budget is next week?
Be the fourth Thursday in the month.
Okay, then, DRC.
DRC did have a meeting. We have a new business coming to town. They were asking for a variance from a seventy-five foot pole to a hundred foot pole. We asked them to reconsider that and look at a secondary option for their advertisement along the interstate. It can be, again, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five foot pole, but that hundred foot pole, we're just asking to reconsider and keep it to seventy-five.
All right, did I overlook?
Right, the parks, we did not meet, but Mr. Jones is here and Ms. Carolyn. There are a lot of beautiful things that went on within the past few weeks.
Greetings, Council.
Greetings.
Okay, just to give you some update on what's taking place the month of March. Just last week, we had an art show in which we partnered with West Memphis School District, and it was very successful, by the way. We had like sixty different kids turning artwork, and we posted it at our administrative office, and we brought in some judges that were not related to the kids, and we found some winners, but all of them were winners. But we selected them based on grades. So we didn't have a kindergarten competing with a twelfth grade, so we just, we did it. So our art show was extremely successful. Updates on Tilden Rogers. The weather has been our biggest enemy. Those guys have been working like to midnight. If you pass by late at night, I don't know if you go up that late, but those guys have the lights on and they work clean through midnight. So far, they have completed the tennis courts, basketball slash pickleball courts. All of the L E D lights have been installed already. They've already started the groundwork for the splash pad. Just yesterday, we had a meeting on rebuilding the restrooms that will be by the quads where the tennis courts are. That whole area is going to be demolished and rebuilt, that section is. As far as the fire fields, they've already started the turf, installing the metal so they can put the turf down. And once again, the only thing that's holding us up is the weather. When it rains, they can't get the equipment that they need on the fields. Next week, if you go out and look, the fire fields, you'll see them, they're about to tear down all those old poles, the light poles, and they're going to put up brand-new lighting on every single field. That's about to take place next week. So the two things you'll see next week would be the concession stand, that area is about to be remodeled, and the brand-new lighting. If you go out and look from Airport Road, you may see some black bars on the dirt. That's the rebar that they put down to pour the concrete over that to start the turf. So that's kind of exciting to watch. Nick and I, the mayor, we've been going out taking pictures so we can create our own portfolio from the beginning to the end of this project. They've been doing outstanding job. What else do we have? Oh, our Women's Trailblazer Award is gonna be at Roberta Jackson on March twenty-seventh. That's next week. So we will have that award. We had our very first one last year. So that's gonna take place at the Roberta Jackson Center next Thursday. Next month, on the twenty-seventh of April, we're gonna have our first Parks and Recreation Community Hall of Fame. That will take place at our headquarters once again. And I'm excited to tell you all that the inductees, we have seven going in on the first inaugural Community Hall of Fame with Parks and Rec. Our very own Mayor Marco McClain will be inducted, Coach William Ball, Shelby Fenter, Serena Curtis, Willie Burns, Shonda Johnson, and Billy Woods. Those were the first seven that would be inducted into the Parks and Recreation Community Hall of Fame. So that's pretty much all I have for now. And any questions?
What time is the Women's Trailblazer?
It would be at twelve o'clock. There's gonna be a launching. Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Crum.
You want to sit and turn it out? Yeah, that concludes my part.
Okay. All right. Did I overlook any other commissions? We're gonna move, we didn't have no appointments, so I'm gonna move down to the presentation by the mayor. I'm gonna ask a young lady by the name, she's very young, young and tender in age, Ms. Emma Millen. Will you please come up, please? Young lady, how you been doing? You been doing okay? I want to recognize her service and to, I get the three letter words, and I'm kind of scared of her. I was scared of her for a long time. I'm just gonna say the I and the R and the S now, but. But on behalf of the City of West Memphis, it's with great honor to recognize and commend you for over fifty years of dedicated service to the Internal Revenue Service. Your unwavering commitment, sacrifice, and professionalism have left a lasting impact on our community and our nation. Your decades of service exemplifies the highest standards of dedication and integrity. Through your work, you have not only contributed to the IRS mission, but also played a role in strengthening the trust and efficiency of public service. Your achievements serve as an inspiration to us all. We celebrate your outstanding career and the legacy of excellence you have, you leave behind, I'm sorry. The City of West Memphis thanks you for your remarkable contribution and will wish you all the best in this well-earned next chapter of your life. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Marco McClain of this great city of West Memphis, Arkansas, together with the citizens of this great city proudly recognize and honor Ms. Emma M. Robinson for her fifty years of dedicated service to the federal government and extended deepest gratitude for her most remarkable legacy and service. And also, I got one question to ask for you. What were the five things you did this week?
Well, I can answer that. You want me to answer those five things? And I would like to say, there's fifty years of overall government service, only twenty-seven with the internal. And I would like to say, there's fifty years of overall government service, only twenty-seven with the Internal Revenue. I started with the U S Army Corps of Engineers, did five, six years there, and five years with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission as an investigator specialist. Then I went on to work for Naval Education and Training out at Milton Naval Air Service. And, and let me back up. I started at Marion High School as a teacher. And I did one year and I thought, well, I gotta, I gotta leave this. But I left there during the BRAC, the Base Realignment Enclosure, where they moved education, training to Pensacola and Florida. And I, I decided not to go. And I just kind of stepped out on faith, took the reduction in force and was off the year. And then I went to work for the Internal Revenue Service, took a downgrade, but I moved back into the human resource area. And I've been a human resource specialist for labor and employee relations for the last twenty-six years. And just recently, when I was thinking about retiring at the end of December, in September, I was offered an opportunity to be the lead labor relations specialist for a new group that they stood up in Clarksdale, Mississippi, under the uplifting our communities initiative. And prior to that, I had worked under seven other areas. Memphis, Austin, Texas, Martinsburg, West Virginia, Ogden, Utah, Denver, Colorado, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and Atlanta, Georgia, up until September. But I'd never had to move my seat out of Memphis. So I just thank God for the opportunity and I thank my sorority sisters who are here tonight and my two daughters and thank you all. But I moved back to this community seven years ago. This is my, my home. And I just appreciate the work that the mayor is doing. He's doing a great job and we just appreciate you all and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we're going to bring up our chief, the fire department, Fire Fighter of the Year Award. Chief Eli, will you come forward?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Today, as the West Memphis Fire Department continue to foster a environment that allows our outstanding individuals to thrive, this day of recognition was implemented for them to show them that their hard work, their commitment has not gone unnoticed. At this time, Chief May will assist me in presenting the awards.
One of the best duties assigned to me by the chief every year is to look through our calls and find those that have demonstrated skill and some bravery and professionalism beyond. And here we're going to present first, the Fire Crew of the Year. And the Fire Crew of the Year this year is for saving of life. There were three crew members to be honored by this. We have one in attendance tonight, Captain Sidney Trey Gaetley III, Lieutenant John Holloway, and at the time firefighter, paramedic Marcus Vow. Marcus has promoted since. Come on up, Lieutenant Vow. This award is for actions taken to rescue a victim trapped in a house fire. This was on December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. On their arrival, Company Two was notified of a potential victim inside of a burning house. Captain Gaetley was riding with a non-certified firefighter, is what we call tailboard that day. So while his lieutenant was setting up their engine to pump water, he made entry into this house alone to search for the victim inside of the fire building. He entered alone without protection of a hose line, performed search. After searching multiple rooms, he located the fire and directed the crew of Company Five, including Lieutenant Vow, to complete fire extinguishment. The firefighters receiving this award then located and removed a sixty-nine-year-old female victim from the residence, after which she was treated by our Fire Department Unit Fourteen and transported to the firefighter's burn center at Regional One Health for additional care. We present this award to Lieutenant Vow and the rest of the crew today, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Congratulations.
Marcus is one of my foundational members here. He, he trains others on multiple shifts on rescue techniques and definitely used it to their advantage on this call. Next award winner is kind of close to my heart. I've, I've known this guy now for four years, kind of taking him under my wing, very, very proud of him. When his battalion chief came up to nominate him for the Firefighter of the Year Award, I said, absolutely fantastic nomination. So without further ado, for his commitment to training firefighters throughout the state of Arkansas, being an active member of our special operations response team, his overall firefighting performance recognized by his battalion and staff chiefs, the City and Fire Department of West Memphis hereby recognize the following as West Memphis Fire Department Firefighter of the Year, two thousand and twenty-four. For outstanding contributions to the department, firefighter Noah Holt.
Congratulations.
Thanks, chief.
You'd like to say a few words, Mr. Noah Holt?
Thank you.
To recognize, the eighty-five percent of our calls the department runs are EMS-based. And up until this year, we've not recognized EMS personnel, which is sort of a, we've missed that. And it's been a, not fair to them because they perform lifesaving care every day. And they have saved people in every one of your awards this year alone. So this year, we've implemented some awards for the, for the EMS division as well. Normally, the EMS chief would be up here to give the presentation. But this evening, he's part of the crew that's receiving the award. So I'm going to ask the following folks in the tenants to come up to the stage, please, while I read out the award. This is in alphabetical order. Captain Paramedic Brian Beddinger, Division Chief Charles Chuck Brackensee, firefighter E M T. No Lowrance, who's not here this evening, firefighter, paramedic Mark Maxwell, and paramedic Gentry Yates. For actions taken to successfully resuscitate a child on October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. West Memphis fire crews arrived finding police officers performing CPR on a five-year-old child in respiratory-based cardiac arrest. Taking over care, advanced life support was provided for cardiac, for the cardiac arrest, resulting in return of spontaneous circulation. That means they got their pulse back. Paramedics then provide multiple medications to correct the respiratory cause of the event. Stabilized, the crews transported the patient to Methodist Labaner Children's Hospital for inpatient care. The patient has returned home after making a full recovery. So congratulations. Don't go away so fast, Chief Brackensee. So Chief Brackensee got an award, but now he gets to provide an award to the paramedic of the year. Come on up, Chief Chuck.
Good evening. So I want to just take a moment real quick, so like this is our first year doing the paramedic of the year, but sometimes it's really hard to pick which one you want. We have ten paramedic staff on our ambulances that work hard each and every day. And I feel like all of them, and I mean all of them, go above and beyond their duties. So it's a real hard thing to pick that award because each one of those ten paramedics mean so much to me and what they do for this city. So I just want to take a moment to explain why I chose this person. As you know, we received honorable mention for our EMS department at the municipal league this year. And this paramedic was really instrumental in helping us get that award. So the West Memphis Fire Department, for her commitment to bettering the department through collateral duties and overall performance as a paramedic as recognized by the EMS division. The City and Fire Department of West Memphis hereby recognize the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Paramedic of the Year, two thousand and twenty-four, for outstanding contributions to the department. Paramedic Stacy McMillan, presented this day, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I just want to say thank you to our leadership team and my peers for considering me for this. It's really an honor. Thank you.
And finally, this is our Staff Member of the Year Award. And as the fire chief, I'm always watching. I tell my staff members all the time, I'm not that concerned about what you do when I'm watching. I'm more concerned about what you do when I'm not watching. And I had the privilege of selecting a staff member of the year. I have the pleasure of presenting our Staff Member of the Year Award to Chief Robert May, Training Officer, Division. I've always believed that if leadership is to be measured at all, it should be measured in the metrics of movement. Where are we today under this administration in the training division versus where we started? Under the leadership of Chief May in our training division, we have produced several momentum achievements. Just to name a few, he has been instrumental in implementing our revised fire suppression tactics. He's established new SOPs based on cutting-edge research. He's ensured that Eastern Lane new training facility was up to par with an Arkansas fire standard for accreditation. Took the lead on reinstating our SWAT team, team which responds to unique emergencies such as hazmat scenes and technical rescues. He ensures all personnel are trained to the highest standard. Played a pivotal role in establishing our nonprofit foundation, something that in the history of the fire department never existed. And currently works vigorously to help city maintain its I S O one rating, saving the community in insurance costs. Chief May has done a magnificent job revolutionizing the training division. Your hard work and commitment has not gone unnoticed. Anytime I've asked him to take on a collateral duty outside of his regular assignment, his response to me has always been, Chief, I'll take care of it. This is the type of people I got on my team. This type of people I got on my staff. Congratulations, Chief May.
Chief, chief.
Yes.
I want to say something about Chief May, but I know when I talked to you, you said that I could say something. Did you want this, could I say something about?
Yes, please. We'd be lovely to hear from you, Honorable Mayor McClen.
Well, well, a lot, a lot of people don't know about this gentleman right here. Not only is he a great fire department leader, he is a man who is how, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to speak it into existence, who has beat stage four cancer. Every, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think every Monday, he was flying up to New York to get treatments and coming back to work. And work, who you know do that? You know, people that say, well, I want to spend as much time with my family and do this and do that. He still sacrificed to come here and help our city and people. That's one of the segments. I hear so much stuff on social media and other things. They just don't know what the men and women of our entire city, what they sacrifice just to be good stew. So. I just truly want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief May. You know, I'd much rather give the award than receive it. It's a calling to me to be a fireman. I've always wanted to do it since I was a kid. Yeah, that's why I come to work, because it's not work. It's just what I'm on this earth to do. I get to work with amazing men and women every day and get to serve you all, your constituents, every day. And who could ask for any more? I'm blessed man. Thank you all. Thank you, chief.
This concludes our award ceremony. We thank you for seeing in and participating. Thank you.
All right, we had no appointments. We had no announcements. Do we have an announcement? We have no citizen requests. When we adjourn this meeting, I'm going to ask Ms. Brewer, will you come to the front and speak with me for a second? You don't want to have anything else? I got a motion and second to adjourn. Okay, bye. Oppose.